Hello everyone. I am Fred Basar and I am your town moderator. Welcome. And before we begin this evening, there's some announcements that I'd like to make. First, I'd like to note that this year's town report is dedicated to Bill Gaines, who celebrated his 106th birthday, July 5th of last year. I think it says in the report, he's going to celebrate his 106th. He's so old, people can't keep track. Bill reminded someone that he is 106. So we want to make sure you know that. I think it's great. But also, I'd like to recognize a group of town officials who have retired this year. Rather than go through the list, they're in the beginning of the book. Six folks. And you may see some of them from time to time. I think a thanks to them is great. I'd also like to thank the Masons, who this year volunteered to have refreshments for you all in the back corner. And please help yourself if you'd like a cup of coffee or something sweet or otherwise. And they got donations from quite a list of folks. Mary's at Baldwin Creek's, Cutters, Snaps, The Bobcat, Bristol Cliffs Cafe, The American Legion Post 19 here in town, American Ladies Auxiliary, the Legion's Auxiliary, Almost Home, Bristol Beverage, Shawas, Vermont Coffee Company, and Live Davis Lodge is again doing this. Also, there's pies by Charlie Cruel. So thank you very much to them. We have a Boy Scout here, William Mason, William Moran. And William is going to help us when we get time for people to speak. And we'll bring a mic to you, so you can stand up, tell us who you are, and speak so that everyone can hear you. This is a brand-new sound system. They trained everyone today. So we've got plenty of mics. And we have mics there. And I know William will be happy to bring one to you. And we'd like you to use it, so that everyone in the body can hear you. Okay. This will be our last town school meeting. And I plan on a recess after Article 7 with no objections, so we can tend to school business. And then we will come back and take care of Articles 8 and move on. It's about when we break for that town school meeting. We conduct our meeting using Robert Rules of Order and state law, just to go over a few which I've often found as useful. Any article must be moved and seconded by the body, and I restate it by the moderator before it's under consideration. After I restate the motion, whoever made it, I will give them a chance to speak first. They have the right to speak first under Robert's Rules. Articles have only one amendment at a time associated with them. Amendments to an amendment in an article likewise can only have one amendment at a time associated with it. After you've spoken once on an article, you will not be recognized a second time until everyone may have a chance to speak. And then I certainly will go back to you. And please be concise and relatively brief with what you say. In terms of voting, we use voice votes most of the time. Someone can request a paper ballot. Seven people have to agree to that. And if I can't tell on a voice vote, whether it's a yea or a nay, I'll have you all stand, yes or no, so we can get it accurate. On motions and remarks, please address it to me. Everything should be addressed to the moderator. That's done, so we can keep things civil. I don't want Carl wrestling with Susan on an issue. So address your comments to me, the moderator, and that helps keep things going smoothly and well. Your speeches must be confined to the merits of the question. And you certainly don't want any, again, personality conflicts here when you use good judgment. My role as a moderator is to help you accomplish the business that we intend to do. Please raise your hand and ask a question if you don't understand what's going on. And you can challenge me if you think I've made an error in judgment. And the body can decide if indeed I have, or whether they agree. My goal is just to have your will be done today. And I try to do my best when it comes to these rules. And is anyone not a registered voter here in Bristol? If you aren't, could you raise your hand? Okay. Registered voters really aren't allowed to participate unless it's okay with you on a specific question. Okay. Now, if you'd all rise, will I have a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Also, this year I'm going to do a brief invocation. This is something that I'm in the town of Daleville every year. And it's something that was not written by Susan Clark and Frank Ryan, Frank Ryan from Starksboro, but something that I think they've made prominent. Actually, some of these words are from the composer Sibelius, the classical composer, I forget from what country.
Finland.
Thank you.
Yes.
Finland. So we welcome here to the town meeting. We've come together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our state itself. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there's an immense gap between saying "I'm right" and saying "I believe I'm right." And that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people, with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. And let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. Welcome to you all. I'd like to introduce the Select Board. We've got Peter Coffey at the end, Ted Levis, Michelle Perley, and then we have Joel Bouvier, John Peter Hefanin, whom I believe is the chair, yes? And in addition, we have the new town administrator. Valerie Caples. Thank you, Valerie Caples. And I know Valerie's been here for a few months, and from what I understand, is doing a great job. On my right is Sharon Lucia. Sharon is an administrative assistant and we take minutes because Jen Myers, who normally does that, still diverted that baby girl on Friday, which is quite early. So we can be thinking of Jen and the newborn. We think that's great. Okay. So, as our tradition has been in previous years, we usually allow our senator or senators and state reps to say just a few words and to kind of give us a sense for what's going on in Montpelier, at least from their perspective. Chris Gray, Senator Gray from New Haven is here. No one has an objection for him, even though he's not a resident of Bristol, sharing with us some good information, I presume. Very good. And Dave Sharp. And I'll say a word or two also. So Chris, the floor is yours.
Good evening. It's nice to be back in Holly Hall. Been here for dances, all sorts of things. And town meeting is just great to be out and seeing all of you in person. Although I love working in Montpelier. I'm there all week for the last eight weeks. So it's good to be out and hear from you folks directly. So in the senate, you serve on two committees, a morning and an afternoon committee. In the morning, I serve on Senate Natural Resources and Energy, attorney-at-chief chair. And this afternoon, I'm on Senate Education. So I'd like to talk just very briefly about the major work in the Natural Resources Committee, and that has been our work on clean water. You might remember that in 2015, we passed the Vermont Clean Water Act and that we've been building the program to deliver a higher level of work across the board in the state of Vermont. So the motto for the development of that bill was "Everybody in", meaning whether you're talking farmland, forest land, municipal land, developed land, residential land, all of that comes under the Vermont Clean Water Act. Because rain falls everywhere, and it needs to be managed well in order to not carry off silt, pollutants, and all the rest. And part of the reason we're doing this is Vermont law, but we also have obligations under federal law, the U.S. EPA. In particular, you may have been hearing the last few years about the TMDL, a cleanup plan and requirement for Lake Champlain, which is a very broad watershed. It's 136 towns, it's 11 counties of Vermont's, 14 counties. And the headwaters almost as far east as the Connecticut River. So it is a large project and involves many, many people. The good news is that we have built a stronger program each year, three years running. The sobering news is that when we have the Natural Resources and Energy, sorry, the Secretary of Natural Resources in it, he said, "It's our perception that although there are some bright spots where we're seeing improvements, overall, we're still seeing a net decline in water quality in Vermont." And the sober answer was, "Yes." So we know we're improving the work we're doing, but we need to improve further, and then we need to be persistent. Right now, one of the main things we're doing is we're working out a long-term budget. Again, we need to be steady about this work and this commitment. And we're building the fiscal year '19 budget that begins July of this year. And we're also looking to the year beyond that, because we see a large funding gap looming in the state's budget for that year. The administration hopes that the state's economy will grow enough to fill that gap. That would be great news if it did. But given how important this work is, how essential, we don't want to just go ahead with our fingers crossed that it's going to turn out that way. So we're developing a Plan B. And that is Bill S. 260, which you may have read about in the paper, or you'll be hearing up, I hope, before we adjourn, because I hope we will have passed it. So that is a plan that continues to build our programs and also develops a contingency plan to make sure that we continue to invest in clean water work for the decades of work that we have to come. So I'll stop there, and unless there's a quick question, I'm all done. Okay, I'm all done.
I think Chris may be available for a minute or two in the back before he goes, as might Dave. I'm another rep that you have. I'm on the Ways and Means Committee, which is one of the two money committees in the House. And this year, we passed late last week, a bill that changes the way we deal with state income tax and changes a little bit the way we deal with education funding. How come two significant changes, changes that will affect every single person in this room? A couple of things happened in the beginning of the year. Number one, the federal government changed the tax code. And we have enough connections to the federal tax code, so that it has an impact on your taxes. And the impact was, we were going to get another $30 million from all of you. Vermonters were going to be contributing another $30 million in state income taxes. We didn't want that. So we had to design things differently, so that we could return the $30 million back to you for a tax-year-18 year that we're in. At the same time, there was an anticipated 7% to 8% increase in the homestead property tax. That anticipated increase was based on actions that the state took last year to keep the property taxes down, as well as anticipated budgets from all the schools. Fortunately, the budgets came in a little bit lower than expected, but there still would have been a healthy increase if we didn't make an effort to try to change it. So what we did is this. For income taxes, you start with your adjusted gross income. You're going to be allowed to deduct from that a 5% credit for charitable contributions that you make. It's a credit. It goes right to the bottom line in terms of reduces your taxes. The maximum credit would be $500. So basically, if you give $10,000 to charities of your choice, you can have a $500 credit. We also created a standard deduction, $6,000 per person, $12,000 if you file jointly, $9,000, I think it is, for household heads, single moms and the like. And we also did a personal exemption of $4,150. Those things would reduce your income before taxation. We also did a couple of neat things. One, if you're on Social Security, retired on Social Security, if you make less than $55,000 and single, you won't have to pay taxes on it in Vermont anymore. If you're making $70,000 or less and you file jointly, you won't have to pay taxes on it either. Something that there's been an interest in for quite some time, and it looks like hopefully we'll achieve it. So we did that. And then we said, "We're going to add to the income taxes a education fund surcharge." In other words, we're going to go to income taxes to raise a little bit of money for public education. About $59 million, which is a modest amount, considering we raised $1.6 million for public education, but it's something. And that is going to be applied as follows. .1% additional income tax in the lowest-income brackets, .5%, a half a percent, for those in the mid-range. And that's, you know, 85% of Vermonters or more are in that category. And then for those in the upper-income bracket, it's going to be a 1% surcharge. So we've created that, raised $59 million, which will be used to lower your homestead property tax. The property tax you pay on your home and contiguous two acres if you have it. The non-resident property tax stays the same. But the property tax that applies to you all for your homes will go down a little bit. In our district, it'll go down by 8.6%. 8.6. The state average is 10. Districts that spend a little bit more per pupil aren't saving quite as much. People that are spending less per pupil are saving more. And hopefully, as time goes on, we'll see what happens. But the goal is to hopefully keep property taxes a little bit under control. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dave. There's a sheet in the back that explains just what I said. If you'd like to have something to read, and there's my email address on the bottom if you have questions.
Thank you, Fred. It's great to see everybody here tonight. I remember my first town meeting in 1968. I haven't made all of them, but I've made most of them. It's a great town meeting, and it's wonderful to see you all here. I've been honored to serve this community and neighboring communities in the legislature. This is my 16th year. And I will not be seeking reelection this fall. So I wanted to review a couple of things that I've been involved in over the years. So bringing transportation projects to this district, notably helping the community cover the cost of the South Street Bridge and some paving projects and bridge projects. And this year, because of work I and others did during the Great Recession, we're going to be able to reduce unemployment insurance taxes for businesses across the state this year by $31 million. And at the same time, increase benefits for unemployed workers. We made reductions in benefits for unemployed workers and increased contributions by businesses back during the Great Recession, because we were $300 million in the hole. Now, we've got $300 million to the good, so we can weather the next recession. And we restored benefits while cutting costs to employers. I've worked hard to increase access to voting, both in terms of making registering to vote easier, to increase voting hours and voting days, absentee voting and early voting, and bringing voting machines throughout the state. Because we know that it's been proven that voting machines are more accurate than hand-counting ballots. They make it a lot easier for the process to take place on election day. And I've worked hard on fair tax policy, including especially education taxes. And I'm delighted that we're moving to some small extent to income taxes to pay for education. It's been my strong belief that we should move more than we're able to at the moment. But we rely in Vermont, 70% on property taxes. The national average is 40% for the support of education. And we rely way too heavily, in my view, on property taxes. And then we did Act 46. And during Act 46, we've heard an awful lot over the years about how we spend too much on education. So we commissioned a study with the Picas Group to ask that very question. Do we spend too much, not enough? And they've done this study in over 20 states. And what they returned with was that we spent about $30 million too much in administrative costs. And we've already seen Act 46 school districts reduce the administrative costs around the state. And that's gratifying. Secondly, they said, "We spend about the right amount of money on K-12 education." And then lastly, they said, "We spend about $140 million too much in special education." We do that because our funding for special education is based on the reimbursement model. And the way I like to characterize that is if I sent you all out to the grocery store and promised to pay 60% of whatever you spent, your purchasing habits might be different. And because we're worried that purchasing habits for special education would be really extravagant, this was decades ago, we put very stringent rules, audited, time studies, and other mechanisms in place to constrain special ed spending. You know, it had the perverse effect of actually increasing special ed spending because the rules forced behavior that was expensive. So as a part of this, the second step we took was that we commissioned UVM to look at how we fund special education. And we brought in the district management group from Harvard to help schools' supervisor unions look at best practices in their communities. So 13 supervisor unions volunteered to be part of that process. And we discovered that best practices actually cost less money and we deliver better services to our students. The UVM study determined that if we underwent the transition to the best practices recommended by the district management group, we could save between $70 and $80 million. So that's really heartening to know that we can make changes, difficult changes, in our education process that will bring better outcomes for our students and actually cost taxpayers less money. This is a difficult and long process, so we expect it to roll out in a four- or five-year period. So don't expect next year to see a big decrease in your education taxes. But that's the process that we've set in place, and we expect it to be fruitful. So that's all I had on my list to go over. I'm happy to answer any questions. Please contact me, either email, or give me a phone call, or corner me in the market. And I'd be glad to engage in more detailed conversation. Thank you.
I think it'd be great if we gave Dave a special round of applause for his 16 years of service. And he was also a select board member for ten years. Thank you. The legal voters of the town of Bristol are hereby warned and notified to meet at Holly Hall in Sett Bristol on Monday, March 5th, at 7:00. Said meeting to be recessed at the close of all business and being transacted from the floor to the following day, tomorrow, Tuesday, the 6th, for voting by Australian ballots between the hours of 7:00 a.m., at which time the polls will open, to 7:00 p.m., when the polls will close for the election of officers and voting on those articles so noted. Article 1, to hear the report of town officers. What's your pleasure?
I'll move back, Fred.
Second? Yes. Okay. Article 1, in the past, if you have any questions on the reports that are inside your town report, now's the time to raise them. Especially if it is maybe a report that isn't likely to be brought up later. So does anyone have any questions at all? Peter?
In writing the select board report, I was so caught up in thanking the people that had left the town and welcoming in our new employees that I never thanked all our existing employees and members that serve on our departments and boards. So I would like to clarify that and thank everyone that serves to make this community what it is.
Any other questions, Article 1? Yes. Please tell us who you are. And William, get a mic to you. Go ahead, get that one. She just looked at him. Hey. Good man.
Thank you. My name's Bob Bernstein. Let's see, in the spirit of speaking to the general reports, thank you, Fred. I prepared a set of notes, as I've done sometimes before. I'm going to pass a copy up for the select board to read at their leisure. One copy, please make five for all of you, so you can get to see what's what. And then I'm going to summarize briefly, because I don't want to take too much time. One, I have a different view of town meeting than some others. And that is, I have a higher regard that we ought to do better business than we do. One way is, I look and I see a pretty full house here, but I also see that it's full of fairly old people. We don't attract young people to this meeting. There's probably some other reasons for that. And what I'd like to say is, I'd like the select board to take a more active role in trying to strengthen town meeting in general, perhaps by attendance, perhaps by other. And I think I've said this before, and I want to see the select board itself do the work. And I can think of any number of different things, but I won't mention the specifics. I just want to see us feel like we're succeeding at town meeting. Two, I want the select board, and to some extent, my fellow constituents, to know how distressed I am that we didn't retain the old town firehouse as a public building. I was one of the ones who wanted to do that, and I tried. And it was, of course, the select board's decision to sell it for residents. And I have to take some blame too, because perhaps I could have made a better pitch for what I wanted or for the retained use as a public building and a valuable asset for the town. But I wasn't able to do that. And especially this year, when we've had a large increase in the amount of residences developed within the village area, it seems very short-sighted to me not to have kept that and used it in a better fashion. And I think we're going to remain, maybe me especially, but I think all of us, if we think about it, will think we've lost something now that we haven't got that public venue of some type. Either something the town could have used or something someone else could have developed as a public use. Three, I want the select board... Three, I want the select board to work more actively to develop a plan for the future funding of the Bristol Police Department. I understand we have a police department meeting, and we've had it tonight, and I don't attend that now that we've made it more difficult to attend on a night like tonight. But nonetheless, the Bristol Police Department as the police commissioners ought to know how out of balance it seems for the taxpayers of the police district to continue to support the police department, which serves the entire town, even though it serves only one little geographic area. I now pay nearly $1,000 toward the police, more than I pay for general government or roads or anything else except education. I'm a single person paying that. There's families, perhaps with police clientele, living a half mile away and pay nothing for that service. So I think that's out of balance. I want to encourage the town, and I'll keep doing it until we find some way to host a study or a commission or make some movement to put this better in balance. I'm a supporter of the Bristol Police Department. I don't know how much policing we need, but I know we need a different funding system. Fourth, I'd just like to say that even though I sometimes am critical, and perceived as critical even more than I think I am, I want to thank the select board for their work. I moved here 20 years ago, as of this coming Wednesday. I was town clerk in Lincoln, and I've now been coming to this meeting for the last 19 years. I'm never quite sure how to participate, but I'm anxious to try to help us participate and say that I know the select board is trying to do their best. It's obvious to me that they're trying to do their best. So even when I'm critical, I want you to hear that I'm also appreciative, and I thank you for the time to say that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 1? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of moving Article 1 as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. You've moved Article 1. Article 2, collect town officers by Australian ballot. This will happen tomorrow between 7:00 and 7:00. Please come. And I guess we'll leave it at that. Article 3. Actually, we probably should move that Article 2 so we can do it tomorrow, right? So all those in favor of Article 2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank heavens. I don't know what I would have done if I had gone down. Article 3, the voters of the town of Bristol vote that all real property taxes payable in installments shall bear interest at the rate of three quarters of 1% per month or a fraction thereof for the first three months, and thereafter 1 and 1/4% per month or a fraction thereof from the due date of each installment, with the payments to the town treasurer of real property taxes for the town's fiscal year period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, being due in two equal installments on November 5th, 2018, and April 5th, 2019, by fiscal delivery to the town office before midnight on that date. Do I have a motion to move the article? Okay. Would anyone like to propose we amend Article 3 to make it 2019 on April 5th?
I'd like to.
Yeah. I think that'd be good, otherwise you ain't getting any taxes. So there's been a motion to amend Article 3 by changing the date in the last line from April 5th, 2018 to April 5th, 2019. What's your pleasure? Shall we go ahead and vote this? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And you amended Article 3, so that is accurate. Any discussion on this article?
So it does not mention a penalty for late payment. Has that been rescinded, or is there still a penalty? And if so, how much is it?
She didn't give us those notes.
I know there is a penalty if you pay late.
Last I knew, it was 8%.
It's 8%, yeah.
Michelle, then, you would report that it's an 8% penalty on an annualized basis?
Yeah, well...
No?
It's just a one-time, one-time.
Okay. One-time 8% penalty if you don't pay on time. Everyone's paid on time here, so none of you know the answer to that question, right?
Does it need to be a penalty?
Good question. The question is, although we didn't have a mic, should this be in Article 3? For that article to be accurate? Or does it being not in there, it's still okay, it's still applicable?
Mr. Moderator? Yes. If everybody would turn to the report at page 79, that's word for word, the exception of the dates changed. There's no mention of last year's minutes, that we condensed minutes of last year's annual town meeting, and there was no mention of a sets of penalty of 8%. So just reading what I read was last year. Article 6. No, that's just to bring the delicate tax collector in test.
I think the penalty is law in town. I don't know that we have to move it. I think we do have to remind people when it'll be due, and I think the penalties stand. This is gonna be my guess. Yes?
I'm gonna propose an amendment. So that we state that there is a penalty, and the penalty is 4%. When you think about it, the first five...
Let's have a second of that. You have a second?
Right.
Okay.
When you think about it, you're 10 minutes late, or it gets to the town clerk the following day, 4% of the $5,000 tax bill is a pretty substantial penalty for being a day late. Plus added on is the interest. Now, I think the interest rates are legitimate, and they ought to be in place, but just the 8% for one day seems excessive. We used to use that 8% to pay for the delinquent tax code, but I don't think we do that anymore. And so I think the reason for an 8% has gone away.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion on the amendment, which is to add a 4% penalty, which changes, I think, what we have in current action? Yes? William, get a mic to... Peter, please.
I gotta have a mic.
Back there.
Pete Ryan. If your taxes are one day late, you're one of the few people that are delinquent, that are just one day delinquent. Our taxes are quite delinquent for a few weeks afterwards. Secondly, our taxes are due about twice a year, and that's about what we should be paying. So I think we ought to leave it alone and leave it where it is, and pay your taxes on time because we have to borrow money if you don't.
Any other discussion on this amendment? Yes, right back there, William. Please identify yourself. Right there.
Steve Leopold. I'm a veteran, and I have a mortgage payment that goes out west to the mortgage company. And I'm gonna be penalized if the mortgage company in the town don't get together to pay the taxes on time in relation to the form.
Is anyone here in the room?
I think that's a question. I think that's a question for Jen, but I think that's a case-by-case basis. If it's a miscommunication between the mortgage company and our due date, that's a consideration that she would take into effect. But I think she'd be best to answer that, and of course, she's not here.
Jen is the town treasurer, reveals a fact. You might ask when she returns. Yes, sir?
Well, let's see.
Give a mic, William.
Let's see, one, I'm not sure that we have the statutory ability to change this at this meeting, and I'd like to know if we do. So I think that might be complicated to find out. Two, the question about the mortgage escrow payments is no change, so that shouldn't affect the vote in this case. That's the way it's always been. We've always had that. Three, there was one other thought I had, just to help clarify. Oh, the 8% is being used to help fund the town government in general, so if we take away a half of that, we ought to be finding some more money to help fund the town government. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Weston, right behind you, William. Please tell who you are.
I always support Dave's amendment for the same philosophical reasons that we made these changes to the interest rates a couple years ago, and that is that the interest rates seem to represent rates that are higher than we're paying anywhere else. And most of these people that are having trouble paying their taxes are not doing it intentionally. They're struggling as it is. And to charge them interest rates way beyond what the general rates are in the general public, I think, is a disservice to them. And so I think that because we made the change a couple years ago on the interest rates that we're charging, we should do the same thing tonight on the penalty. I would support the report, for sure.
Do you all know what happens when you're late on your property tax bill? Does anyone here, can anyone here explain to people what happens if you're late on your property tax bill to put this amendment in perspective? Peter, can you do that?
Taxes don't become delinquent till April 5th. At that point, your penalty is added on, so...
And the penalty is 8%?
If you had missed your installment, those months of rates are in the article are what you're charged each month, once a month. Michelle, can you look up and see, I think the 8% is a state statute?
That's what I was trying to find.
If you've been able to find it? I think it's a state statute, but I can't swear to that, but...
I certainly can't. Okay. Okay, get the mic down here.
So a few years ago, when I was on the Ways and Means Committee, what we did was, we allowed, we changed it to allow communities to set the rate up to 8%.
Okay. There you have it. Yes, right there. Please tell us who you are.
Claire Wallace. I'll stand here. Would you clarify, I believe it's also if you paid your first installment, but you missed the April installment, you're still charged for the entire, 8% of the entire tax amount, not just on the balance? Would you clarify how that is done, how the math is done?
Sharon, the assistant, has said it's only on the balance. So if you paid half, but you're late on the second half, the penalty is assessed on that Any other questions, comments? Yes. To your left, William.
Fred Scherer, the Venatcha. Can you tell me how many people are delinquent every year in their taxes?
What was the question again?
How many people are delinquent?
How many people are delinquent annually? Does anyone have an approximate history or is it in the report?
Page 25.
Page 25 of the report.
And how much, okay, so how much is generated in delinquent taxes?
We know how much extra income from the penalty and the interest rate is generated from delinquent taxes. Hold on. Okay, let's be patient. We'll see if we can't get an answer. I believe it's on page 13 of your report. Taxes and payments. So it appears that this 2017 actual is interest 4,500, penalty 3,400 plus. Is that correct?
That's up to 2016, December 6th. The audited amount from 2016-17 was $8,494. Interest was collected for delinquent taxes.
And penalty was $19,293.
Yes.
If we increase the fee, how much more will be generated?
Well, the motion is to decrease the penalty. And it would basically be cut in half because currently the penalty's 8%, and the amendment suggests it wants to be 4%.
I'm in favor, let's please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else on this amendment? Up, back there. There you go. Please stand. And, oh, William, fair enough.
Hi. Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry. I would support this reduction as well. I know we had an expense where we were shy of the first installment, and I had asked what the penalty was, and especially considering we'd come up with 3/4 of the amount, and I was really shocked to hear what that fee was, especially considering the grace period we usually have with our mortgages, the flexibility that's often allowed when you pay a significant amount of money to a particular institution or business for a certain number of years. So I think it's indeed a mess.
Okay. I think there's another gentleman in the back room. Please stand. Tell us who you are.
I'm Bill Brown. 8% is junk bond rate. So my feeling is that the penalty should be set in parallel to what Bristol's borrowing rate is. So therefore, every year at this meeting, you would set what the penalty would be. I don't know what your borrowing rate is now, 4% or 3.5%, something like that?
Yeah, it would be in that, it could have been.
Yeah. So I, over here, a gentleman was talking about, well, if somebody's late, why should we have to pay for that lateness because we have to borrow money? Well, let's just make it neutral, so that every year at this meeting, whatever our historical 12-month, past 12-month borrowing rate is, that in fact is the penalty for late payment for the next vote once. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on this? Yes, right in the back there, William, right next to you.
Hi, Fred.
Please tell us who you are.
Oh, Ray Allen, sorry. I would just remind folks then that the Federal Reserve is starting to raise those rates a quarter point every three or four months. So, and so the delinquents need to stay on there for a long time. And so the delinquency stays on there for a long time.
All right. Down here, please. The reason why we like people to identify themselves is so that when we take the minutes, we know who's giving us those pearls of wisdom.
Nancy Blair. I'm wondering if... It seems like eight percent for one day is a lot, and maybe it could be something that kicks in monthly, you know, so that people that take more months to come up with the money end up paying more than people that the letter got stuck in the mail and just have to wait for a week maybe.
Yes. I think that's if there's an interest charge that may accomplish what you just said. So there's a penalty, but then there is a interest that builds up to longer people.
Well, I'm wondering if the penalty could kind of do that, too.
Yes?
Joel. Whether I'm for or against Lori, I'm not really sure here right now, but I can remember being some of those old timers in the room here, like we could put a four in front of that thirty-nine thousand dollars. Taxes, delinquent taxes in this town were almost a half a million dollars back in the nineties, the eighties. And now think about that eight percent. That doesn't come to the town and go to the coffers as we all think it does. That also the delinquent tax collector, who is Jen, she has to hire an attorney to put that place if it goes to a tax sale, has to go to an attorney, draw up the papers, have a tax sale, pay the sheriff, serve the papers. So there's a lot of cost in that eight percent that goes back out. It's not just, boy, I'm going to be a new tax collector because there's eight percent and they come forty thousand dollars. Like I said, I can remember that was about four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand back in the eighties and early nineties.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, we'll give it. Dave down here, one more shot.
So I don't have clarification, Joel, or someone up at the table. I don't... Do we still pay a delinquent tax collector out of the eight percent? My understanding was that we do not. I thought that was taken over by our town treasurer. And then secondly, those costs and fees you referred to, Joel, those are collectible when the tax sale goes through. Those are not a net cost to the community.
Well, we did bring it in-house, and some of that eight percent does pay the tax delinquent tax collector, which is Jen. We brought it in-house a few years ago on the recommendation from Teresa, which the board all agreed with, the board members who were at the time, board members. And it was because of... The office was doing ninety percent of the work for the delinquent tax collector. So we decided to bring it in-house so we could control those costs a little better. And... But Jen has actually texted... I can't watch, I'm still in the hospital, but collection efforts. Collection... I'll read this. Collection efforts, regular mailing of monthly tax bills. Making and following up on agreements with people make to pay their taxes, personal collection letters, mail certificates when we get to the tax certified, pay for that. When we get to the tax sale point, there are efforts made by our town attorney that the town pays for, so...
All collectible.
Yeah.
Also, there is an additional stipend that she gets for being a tax collector. It's not part of her everyday job, so that money goes towards that as well.
Any other questions on the amendment? In the back, man.
I just wanted to point out for clarity that on page 25, it says that delinquent taxes are thirty-nine or something. When they're delinquent, at the April 5th, they're over a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. On June 30th, they were about eighty-six to ninety thousand. So this figure is deceptively low because six months, actually nine months have gone on since the taxes became delinquent. This, so it's clear that this low tax amount isn't for the right after taxes.
In other words, it started out in April 6th around a hundred, and now it's thirty-nine or eight. So they've done a good job of collecting a fair amount. There's a hand right there.
Carl, just...
That sits on, Carl. Just put it to your mouth.
It's maybe just a silly point, but it seems to me there's a big difference between a late tax and a delinquent tax. So you don't hire a lawyer when the person misses the date and goes, I did this when I had a house in Richmond, my first house. And it's like a bump, you know? You had it ready, you had it ready, you didn't put it in. And then you got to pay this enormous amount. And I'm just saying that's... You're late. And that's just not the same as you got to go to court with them and all that stuff. So that... I just... I don't think that if you're just late and you come to pay it the next week, that it should be huge. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Michelle.
Jen just said, you know, one of the suggestions we could do is maybe for those people who are late, whether they forget or, you know, a couple of days late, they do the four percent after the tax, April 5th, April 6th, and then maybe apply another four percent July 1st if they are continuing, or those people who are continually delinquent.
Well, we could do that, but we have an amendment on the floor that says four percent. Yes, William, do we have a little more information?
I've been trying to do some online research to see if I could find a statutory reference. Instead, I found the charters that were approved by various municipalities that cover this in their charters. And the general thread has been that any installment not paid by the due date shall be delinquent, and there shall be immediately added the amount of blah, 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 equivalent to three percent of the delinquent installment. After the expiration of thirty days from the due date of each installment, an additional penalty charge of five percent shall be added to the amount due. Now, the different models or the different examples that I have found, it varies. Sometimes the five percent was levied first and followed by three percent. So... But it's ironically perhaps it totaled eight percent in the end. So that's the best I could find so far.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Just call the question.
Call the question. We need two-thirds of the body to do that. And what this means is we end debate and we'll vote on the amendment that has been proposed. So all those in favor of ending the discussion and voting on this, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, so we're going to vote. If you'll give me a second, I want to get from the notes exactly what the amendment says, so we can get it right. Okay. I think we got it. It's really very simple. Dave, correct me if I've got it wrong, but at the end of Article 3, we would add the line that the penalty on delinquent taxes be reduced to four percent. So what we're going to do is we're going to vote on Article 3 with the additional line that the penalty on delinquent taxes be reduced to a four percent figure. Okay? So all those in favor of reducing the penalty to four percent effective with this period that's coming up, as per the dates, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. The ayes appear to have it, and you've approved the amendment. All right. Any discussion on the article as it's been amended? Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the voters of the town of Bristol vote that all real property taxes payable installments shall bear interest at the rate of three-quarters of one percent per month, or a fraction thereof for the first three months, and thereafter one and one-quarter percent per month, or a fraction thereof from the due date of each installment, with payments to the town treasurer of real property taxes for the town's fiscal year period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, being due in two weekly installments on November 5th, 2018, and April 5th, 2019, by physical delivery to the town offices before midnight on that date, and that the penalty on all delinquent taxes be reduced to four percent. All those in favor of Article 3, as has been amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, and Article 3 has been approved by you as amended. Article 4, to set the salaries that shall be paid to the members of the select board. Go ahead, motion. Second? So any discussion on the salaries paid to the members of the select board? It might be useful for everyone to know, be reminded of what they are, or what's being proposed. Any of you guys want to tell them how much you make?
No.
You do?
Five hundred dollars. It's five hundred dollars. You get five hundred dollars a year and then fifteen dollars per meeting.
Five hundred a year, fifteen dollars per meeting is what it is now. What will the salaries be paid to the select board?
I believe they remain the same.
They should let them be... Remain the same. We have a second to that. Who said that? Okay. Any discussion? Five hundred dollars as a salary, fifteen dollars per meeting is what's been proposed. Yes, ma'am, right? Wait to get this. Please tell us who you are. Thank you.
Debbie Ransdale. Where I used to live, the chair got more money. But that doesn't happen here.
I guess not. Did you get more money, Peter? No? It's the same. Maybe in the future, though, do think of that. Who knows? Yeah, right here. There you go. Thank you, Larry.
Claire Wallace. I'm just curious, under the town officer select board salaries, it shows an increase for 2018, 2019. Was that anticipating that there was going to be a different outcome of a vote a day? I'm just curious why it went from the budget of seventeen, eighteen, sixty-two, twenty, to seventy-five hundred.
I believe Claire, it's just we have more... We start our budget meetings earlier, like right after Thanksgiving, we go every Monday night through January, and the budget's made up on every other Monday night, or twenty... About twenty-eight to thirty meetings a year. Now we're doing every Monday night after Thanksgiving right through almost January.
Any other discussion on the salaries of the select board? Seeing none, will act on the sal... To set the salaries paid to the select members of the select board, which will be five hundred dollars as a salary and fifteen dollars per meeting. Those in favor of those numbers, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And you have passed Article 4, setting the salary of the select board members. Article 5, will the voters adopt the proposed 2018-19 fiscal year highway fund operating budget in the amount of seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-one dollars, a portion thereof in the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the 2008 grand list of the town sufficient to raise that sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. What's your pleasure on Article 5? That is Article 5. Yes. I need a motion to move it. Right there. Thank you, Melon. Second? All right. Discussion on the highway budget. Okay, we have two. Start with you, Steve. Hang on, we'll wait for William to get to you. Thank you.
I know this year has been very bad for roads. I have several holes in front of my house, and I'm sure a lot of other people have, too. Where does this year's whole's budget meet with what has been spent this year for repair of roads and plowings and this kind of thing? So is it budgeted in that amount for next year, too?
So the question is, Steve, what exactly are you driving at?
This year was bad because of potholes and things like this.
Yeah.
Is the amount that we're setting now exactly enough, hopefully, for seat-taking for next year?
Okay. We'd like to answer that up here.
Steve, we are still on... Yeah, we've overspent, probably going to overspend our salt budget. And... But we still got something that most of the towns in the state don't have, and Barrett don't have right now, salt. We still, with our new shed, we still got probably two-hundred ton left, so we can get through the winter fine. But we're going to overspend that salt budget. Fuel is down from what Peter budgeted last year, so we're going to be fine there. Probably overtime's going to be a little bit, but I know our road foreman will find... He will always give some back if I want to, or not overspend his budget. He'll find it somewhere.
Okay. There was another question. Right there, William. Please tell us who you are on this.
I see Article 11 coming up about a sidewalk reserve fund. She talks about the future. I'm wondering if Article...
Speak up. In Article 5, what is the sidewalk plan for this year? Is there any sidewalks budgeted in Article 5?
There is no... There's not budgeted in the highway budget. It's budgeted there, a separate article that the voters asked us last year to put more money into the sidewalks, and that's why it's on a separate article, thirty-eight thousand dollars from, I believe, or thirty-five, excuse me.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five from 17 last year.
So we'll discuss sidewalks on Article 11, Bob. Prepare something that'll be done this year.
Starting July 1st, yes.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other discussion on... Yeah, okay.
I think it bears mentioning that our road foreman has opted to retire next month, and we typically wait for the end of the meeting to make these announcements, but he has a tendency of sliding out, so I would like to... I would like to take this time to thank him for his service to the town of Bristol.
That was Peter Boo here. Thank you, Peter. Any other questions on the highway budget?
Fred, just a comment.
Yes?
I think it's important for people to know, you probably remember last fall, the paving project at the state's going on 116, and they came as far as the prayer rock from Starksboro. They're going to pick it up this spring at the bottom of, at Stony Hill and go all the way east Middlebury. And that section in between that goes through the village is scheduled to be paved in 2020. So, Steve, that's a couple of years away for you, but that will help your situation at some point on East Street.
So we've got to live with the potholes for another year, or a year and a half, maybe. Any other questions on highway? Seeing none, will the voters adopt the 2018-19 fiscal year highway fund operating budget in the amount of seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-one dollars, a portion thereof in the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the 2018 grand list of the town sufficient to raise that sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. All those in favor of Article 5 is... All those in favor of Article 5 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and Article 5 has been passed as the term. Article 6, will the voters adopt the proposed 2018-19 fiscal year general fund operating budget in the amount of $926,739, a portion thereof in the amount of $753,882 to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the 2018 grand list of the town sufficient to raise that sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. What's your pleasure on Article 6? Will move it?
So moved.
So move. Second?
Second.
Who said that?
Right there.
Okay, so, we've got Article 6 on the floor. Any discussion on the general fund operating budget, and those matters that, that use the money to pay for? What page is the budget on for the general fund?
13, start at 13.
So, any questions for the select board on almost a million dollar general fund budget? Don't see any hands. They like what you do, guys. Last chance. Alrighty, oh, we got one, there we go.
Can we just hear an overview from the select board on what the high points or low points of the operating budget are?
Two holes. Can someone give us the view from 30,000 feet? There's a high points, anything that sticks out? Anybody at all?
Yeah, health insurance is, you know, what else? It's gone up.
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp has gone up. We are trying to negotiate to sell the land behind the fire station, uh, to a developer, to developers, for different parcels there. And I'm still working on to finish up that water line down to Lover's Lane to service a bunch of residents and businesses on Lover's Lane.
Anything else of note? Town administrator has some information.
On page 23 of your town report is a summary of the various funds, and the general fund that's supported by taxes, I believe, is reduced by, um, just a hair under 5%. Actually, let me, let me make sure I've got that right. Yep. Well, actually, let's see, Joe, is, um...
Is it not 1.18%, as on page 18?
We need to recognize, please.
That is correct. On page 18, it shows a slight increase of the net supported by taxes of just a hair under 2%, or 0.2%. But total expenses decreased by just under, just over 0.71%, and that, that's attributable to a decline in revenues, projected revenues.
Okay.
Ken Weston. Uh, since Joel raised the question, I'd like to follow on that. Could, um, could we get an overview of where we stand on the water project on Lover's Lane because of the fact, Steve? Markability of the land behind the firehouse?
We've, we've got the line down to the, um, down to Woodland Apartments, which is the, the property that we need to serve to get rid of the well shield. Uh, we're currently working with them. Um, the person that we had an agreement with passed away, and is tied up in probate court. So, we're working with them, we, we have some budget numbers, it's actually on our agenda, um, to discuss in the executive session after this meeting, um, and we'll have more information after that. But as of right now, the water line is down there, and we're working with the, with the new owner, which is the previous owner's daughter, to try to get that hooked up, to eliminate that well shield.
Okay, any other questions on the general fund? Seeing none, will the voters adopt the proposed 2018-19 fiscal year general fund operating budget in the amount of $926,739, a portion thereof in the amount of $753,882 to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the 2018 grand list of the town sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. All those in favor of Article 6 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And Article 6 has passed. Article 7, will the voters adopt the proposed 2018-19 fiscal year arts, park and recreation department budget in the amount of $224,393, a portion thereof in the amount of $145,843 to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the 2008 grand list of the town sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. Will someone move Article 7 for us?
So moved.
So moved. Who said that? Okay, Article, Article 7, the arts, park and recreation department budget. Do we have questions on that? There we go. Wayne, straight back.
Darla Sandoval. Uh, I have a question regarding the budget for the teen center. I noticed that the part-time line has been cut substantially by about $5,000, and I'm wondering that the plan is around that and why that, that change was made?
What, what page is the budget on? You know, Bob? 2021, for those of you following. The teen center.
Darla, what we're looking at with, um, three of the, uh, four people that are currently working there are leaving, and thank you very much for your time, um, that, uh, we would probably change the assistant job to work in both places, and we're thinking that we may be able to do something along those lines, make that more of a full-time So, we're going from four employees to three, uh, and the FTE will be about the same.
Go ahead, follow up.
I'm sorry, I don't understand how the, the part-time position would work in both places. Are you talking about work in the office, at the rec office, as well as at the teen center?
Yes, probably work out of the teen center, uh, but do some of the work that the assistant is doing now.
But at reduced number of hours, that doesn't make sense to have them do two different jobs to reduce their hours.
No, we wouldn't be reducing that, because right now, that is a part-time job.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to wrap my voice. So, you've got, so the, the part-time position at the teen center right now, that part of the budget's being cut by $5,000, but now you're going to ask them to do that job as well as do some assistant work at the recreation office?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
For less money than what they were doing before?
But we're having the, the, your, the assistant director, well, it'll, it'll be crossing over, and we're going to work that out. We don't have the specifics at this point, but we saw this as an opportunity with, with new people coming in. When we get the new director, we'll work with them to figure out how we can make this work.
So, when you talk about the assistant, you're talking about the position that Valerie's now holding?
Yes.
You're going to be changing that job?
Yes.
So, may I make the suggestion, coming from being the director of that department, knowing the work that the assistant does in the amount of overtime, or not overtime, how do we call it? Comp time, what is the word? Comp time that Valerie puts in, I don't believe that that, in my humble opinion, I don't believe that that's a feasible thing to do. I would like to make a motion, or make an amendment to that by, to add that $5,000 back into that part of the budget.
So, you're making a motion in Article 7 to add $5,000 to the $224,000 budget, which then would also be added to the amount to be raised in taxes specifically to do what, Because you can't be specific.
So, the way that I understand, I understand that you're looking to make some changes, so it's hard for me to be specific, but I'm, what I'm, I'm thinking that the, the assistant to the, the assistant to the director puts in a considerable amount of comp time to, equalling several weeks of comp time a year. So, to cut that position and have another position cut as well, doesn't make sense to me. So, I would say that that money could go to support...
Personnel?
Personnel, correct.
Okay, so, we're looking at a motion to increase the budget and the amount to be raised in taxes, and the rec department's budget by $5,000 for the person, for the purpose of paying personnel. We all got it. Do we have a second to that motion? Okay, discussion on this amendment. William, right there.
I agree with that, what I'm saying, Darla, where I believe all she's doing is adding $5,000 to the budget. I do not believe you can specify how that money is spent.
I always get this confused. Is it town matters you can't be specific, and school matters you can't, or is it the other way around? I always thought on school matters, you can't be specific, but on town, you can. We added money for sidewalks last year, specifically for sidewalks, I know.
You can add it, but you can't tell us where to spend it.
I'm gonna check.
I hope we reduce the slant of salaries.
Okay, I've been told by someone who I think probably knows, our town administrator, that you can't be specific, although, the, the suggestion that it be used for personnel would certainly be something the select board would take under advisement. So, I think what we must do is amend the article to add $5,000 to the budget, and leave it at that, with, with the suggestion having come from you, Darla, for them to contemplate. Uh, right here, woman, please stand, there you go.
Sunny Wilson. I'm just noticing that there's a steady decline across the board in the rec budget over the past few years, and just wondering what's up?
Okay.
We've, and Darla can attest to this, with the, um, federal funded program of C21 in the schools, it has really taken a hit to our rec department in participation by the, um, kids in the surrounding towns, because the C21 program is free, so they don't have to pay for that, and so that takes, you know, the program in here takes a dive, and Darla and Val have had to think outside of the box to try and come up with revenue for them, so it's been hard to, you know, balance that for them.
Okay. Right there.
I believe that that C21 is for the elementary, Bristol Elementary School, or the five town elementary schools, not the middle and high schools, so they also need recreation and activities after school hours. So, I think we should continue to support our recreation department. When we moved here, there was no, nothing going on, we had to create activities for our daughters, and now our grandchildren have a amazing array of opportunities across the board, and for adults, they do more than just children. I'm wondering, I've been on boards before, and we were able to take a line item, and I think that the full, the part-time labor on page 21, second line under youth center skate park, was the item that was reduced by the 5,000, and I'm wondering, can that not lap line item, that number of 11,962, that can't be a motion made to raise that by 5,000, and put that money back on that specific line? And I'm wondering where the rule is, it says you can't do that. If you can't?
Someone answered that?
I think that it was an opinion, but not a fact, so I'd like to hear that factually, that that can't be done.
That it can't be done to specify, is that what you're saying, Claire?
That's correct, that I couldn't say that that line item with 5,000 added to that specific line that was reduced by 5.
It's my understanding that, I suppose, a motion like that could be made, but it's my understanding, and I don't have a statutory reference to point to, that municipal budgets are not line, line item budgets, that voters are voting on the bottom line budget, and that the motion could certainly articulate the intent for the use of that money. And quite likely, in the next year's town report, that line item would be shown with a 5% increase in that budget line item. But because Vermont does not operate on a line item budget, that's, that's where that basis comes from.
Claire, in the past, where we've had motions to add money to budgets, that's what, what we've always been told, so, I, I mean, that's what I'm basing my answer on, that in the past, when the, and, and that's not to say, if the community votes for this motion and says that that's where they want that money, um, I'm guessing that that's where that money will go. It's just that we're not bound to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, right there?
Patty Heatherly. My concern is, will two people still be working in the rec department here to continue with the great work that Val and Darla have started? I think it's a very important part of our community. And best practices, my understanding from teaching, is that it's great to sit in a room and at least kick around some great ideas back and forth, and when you're by yourself, it's a whole different story.
Does anyone have a quick, can anyone talk about the people there, or no?
With Darla leaving and Ryan leaving, we're kind of in a state of change with the rec department, and we have totally decided how we are going to handle, um, what was that? How, the change and how it's, how it's gonna pan out, I guess. Um, we do have in the back a survey, a rec department survey, we would like people to take and put in the box, and we will try and get that, um, online on the webpage for people who are not here, at least.
Okay, thanks to technology, I've got the Secretary of State's website, and indeed, we, the body can't direct the select board to spend something on a specific matter. It's, they can make the recommendation, but we can't, you can't guide them unequivocally. Right here, William, to your right.
I'd like the select board to say if they think they can operate the rec department at its current level with the budget they proposed, and if they think they can, I'd like to support their budget and vote against this amendment.
We wouldn't have put the budget forth if we didn't think we could stay within it now.
Thank you.
And you have a discussion on the amendment, which is to increase the, uh, to increase the rec budget by 5,000. In fact, who is it? Yes, please stand. I'll get your mic, back there, William. There you, you see it? Thank you.
I'm Chad Richardson. I don't say much at these meetings.
There you go.
I don't say much at these meetings, but the rec department has always been important to me. I don't say much at these meetings, but the rec department, it's always been important to me. I'm looking at this budget and I'm seeing the biggest cuts in the whole book are in the rec department. And you're saying you're in a state of transition. You're gonna be in the same spot you are with the police department where you don't have the money to pay for what you need find out six months down the road, we need to do it. Now is not the time to be taking all this money out of the rec department budget when we're in a state of transition. I, I've spent a lot of time at the hub, I've spent a lot of time with the rec department, I have a lot of those kids. And I know what a difference that place makes. I think we're making a mistake if we take this big cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Pardon? Uh, okay.
Valerie Hansen, I think it might be helpful for folks to know that I have been the assistant to the rec director for the last eight years and there has never in eight years been a time when I have worked less than, less than 150 to 200 comp hours over the course of the year. So I'm paid for 22 hours a week in the rec department, that's, that's my, that's my time there, 22 hours. And never in, over the course of the eight years have I worked less than 120 comp hours. So it might be helpful when you, you think about how we're going to co-mingle this position with the, the hub teen center. It's, it would be important for you to know that in addition to, and I, I sort of have a bugaboo about the way that the rec department budget is, is shown because we also have a parks budget and we also have a Holly Hall budget. But what you don't know is that the recreation department operates Holly Hall and it also operates the parks. And what that means is we rent this space, we show this space, we clean this space. And there's no accounting for that in the Holly Hall budget. It all is accounted for through the recreation department budget. And the same would be true with the parks budget. While we don't charge a fee to have people use our parks, we do require a fair amount of paperwork as is the American way be generated in order for folks to use that park. And then there's follow-up afterward. So the rec director and the rec assistant does a whole lot more than offer a Tai Chi class or, or, you know, a Taekwondo. So I, I think, I think it was important to me for you to know that because it is a pretty diversified position and, yeah, so thanks.
Anyone else? Straight back.
Bonnie Donovan.
Put the mic closer to-
Bonnie Donovan, maybe you can help me, I'm curious about this whole thing, the $5,000 in rec department. And we, we can't ask or demand, say, that that be given to the, back to the rec department?
Right, the question is, go ahead, put it closer to your mouth.
The question is, it seems that we're deciding in this whole thing about where money is going to be spent, including the salaries of the select board. So how is that different than the, the rec department in deciding what that money should go for? Do you get what I'm doing?
I do, I do, I understand. It seems counterintuitive, but the law stipulates, Secretary of State says, and, and memory comes back to me, that you can, you can change your budget up or down and, and, and the body can very vociferously suggest a use, but you can't bind the select board to that use. And they would just have to take it under advisement, that's, that's the rule. That's the rule.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Don't get hung up on where that money's gonna go. I can assure you that if, if the body here puts that money in the salary line, that I'm 99% confident that that's where that money will end up with this board. We're not in the habit of doing what we're not asked to do. And it wouldn't be right of us if you put the money in that salary line for us to spend it somewhere else. We're just making you aware that we don't have to. But I'd rather have you informed than to have you find out that it went somewhere else and wonder why.
Hi, Wendy, again, I have a question. If, I'm noticing that the amount that the rec budget is decreasing overall from last year to this year, proposed is 10%, which amounts to about $25,000. 5,000 is a small draw in that bucket. So if, if one wanted to propose that there be level funding for the recreation department, would one then have to vote against this amendment and propose another amendment?
You are permitted to amend an amendment.
Oh.
But we can't go, you can amend an amendment, but that's where it's at, so you have a chance.
Okay, so if I wanted to amend the amendment to keep level funding for the recreation budget from 2017, '18 to 2018, '19?
I think we, we, no, I think we'd want a dollar amount, so if you would, could give us a dollar amount?
Do you want the dollar amount on the total expenditures or the tax-supported expenditures?
We, we probably want the total expenditures and then someone would have to figure out what that would mean on the tax.
Well, it's all right there, it's just two different lines, so I couldn't be so bold as to amend the amendment to offer level funding to the tune of 224,393 dollars to the rec department for 2018, '19, an amount to be supported by taxes to the amount of 145,843 dollars.
That's the current?
That's what's proposed, sorry, let me go through the column before.
What page are you on?
I messed up.
21.
Okay, so to keep the funding at 250,195 dollars for 2018, '19, and the amount supported by taxes to the amount of 166,945. Did I get it right that time?
Who's second, who's second did it? Yes, you're up here. And what was your last name, Wendy?
Wilson.
Wilson, Wilson, excuse me. That was 250,195?
Yes.
Be raised by taxes 166,945?
Yes.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the amendment that would make the budget for the rec department for the coming year 250,195 dollars with the amount to be raised in taxes 166,945. And we have a second. We do. Do we have discussion on this amendment to the amendment? Yes, right there.
Thank you. And before I start, I am in favor of this, of increasing this to a certain extent. However, I believe that what we have to do is add it to the amount that's in the article, not the amount that's on the page 23.
Correct, correct.
That's not the figures that she gave.
I think I, I lost you there, Sharon. We will amend the articles to change 224,393 to 250,195 and 145,843 to 166,945. That's how I understand the amendment to the amendment. Yes, sir.
I don't think this amendment is an amendment to the amendment, it's an amendment to the original article. And I don't think it's germane in, in this way, that it's simply trying to change the original article. It doesn't have to do with the amendment.
Which we can do, but maybe not at this time, you're thinking.
And, and the reason I, I bring it up is because I think it's just a verb of confusion.
I, I think, I think your, your, your point of order is well taken. I think in order to amend the amendment, it would have to be germane to that amendment, which was an increase in the budget but of a $5,000 amount even with a stated purpose versus amending the, wow. Think about this, I mean, it was an article to increase the budget by five grand and to increase what we'd raised in taxes by five grand. So I think it is appropriate that this is put forward because we're just changing the number that was originally proposed. So I think it is germane, I'm gonna stick with that. Unless anyone else, unless the body feels I'm out of whack. But, but if not, we'll move, we'll move forward with, with this amendment to the amendment. Hold on, is that the town administrator wants to make a point?
The voters are voting in expenditure. They're authorizing the, the select board to spend a certain amount of money. We can't know revenues, we forecast them as best as possible. And the second part of that proposed amendment that talked about the net supported by taxes, that doesn't jive with the current projection for revenues. So I think we might want to consider just focusing on the expenditure number and then the, the element supported by taxes is just gonna adjust by itself based upon the revenue and all the other factors.
Okay, so what our town administrator is saying, if we can amend the budget amount and what has to be raised by taxes will be influenced by other matters to be determined. There's no way that the math can be done now with a new number?
According to my calculation, by level funding, so increasing the expenditure to 250,195 dollars, the net supported by taxes would be 171,645, which is an increase of 2.8%.
So, and that, that's pretty accurate then, yeah? Okay, well, who made, who amended the amendment? Do you accept, can we accept this change since the math and the, everything has been done accurately? Okay, fair enough. So we're keeping the budget as is, but because there was some technicality involved in it, we're gonna, we're gonna change what needs to be raised by taxes to 171,645. Okay, so hopefully everyone's clear, let me just repeat what we're doing in this amendment to the amendment. Where the budget amount instead of 224,393 will be 250,195 and the amount to be raised in taxes instead of 145,843 will be 171,645. Okay? You got it. Any more discussion on this amendment? Hold on, let's make sure no one else wants to speak up, okay, okay.
The select board has said they believe they can run the recreation department at the current level with the budget they proposed. We're not believing them if we're suggesting that we raise this. I suggest in this case we believe them. I know some of you think otherwise, I trust them in this. So I suggest we vote this down.
Okay, anyone else on this? Back. Straight back, William.
Darla Senical, one more time. While we brought a mention to Valerie's comp time, I had just left the position after 17 years. I put in countless hour, not countless hours, we do count them, of comp time as well. You may not get a staff that wants to run with comp time. You may not have someone as dedicated as Valerie who's willing to do that as well. I think making this amendment gives you some wiggle room to actually pay people for the time that they're working instead of just giving them time off. I love my job, I love working for all of you, and I'm sure the next person will love it too. They just may not be as willing to give up as much of their free time as Valerie and I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Adam Missburg and I believe Darla's out and they tell them that they're doing their jobs. And I, and I suspect that to do it right, it needs that amount of time. I'm a huge proponent of the rec department, my kids have profited greatly by it. My wife and I have profited greatly by it and my parents have profited greatly by it in, in all sorts of ways. I think the life and energy the rec department brings to this town, this community is extremely valuable. I would hate to see that defrayed in any respect. I am a huge proponent of this amendment and I am a huge proponent of the rec department, I'd love to see it continue the way it is, if not stronger.
Thank you. Anyone else? There we go, straight back.
Hello, just to clarify-
Hey, your name, sir?
My name is Justin Buck. I believe when the, the gentleman down on the, on the left had asked the question if the select board believed that they could stay within the budget, the answer was that they could stay within the budget, not that they could maintain the current level of, of the service. He said that if we didn't believe that we could meet the budget, we wouldn't have made the budget. But that, I don't believe was an answer to the actual question that he asked, which was, can you maintain the current functioning of the services?
Okay, are, do you wanna ask that question? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do. And we see it as an opportunity with, with new people coming on, maybe do some things differently, not that the people haven't done a great job because they've done a tremendous job, there's no question about that.
So by differently, do you mean free? They're gonna, they're gonna maintain what we're currently doing with 25,000 dollars less?
Yes, we believe we can do that.
Let's, let's be polite, sir. Anyone else?
Betsy Blair again. I have no children here. I have used almost no rec department services. I am a huge fan of the rec department and I feel that the programs that are here have had a huge impact on the community itself and that, that I and everybody else have just benefited tremendously from the quality of life that is brought through the rec department program.
Okay, do you, any other comments on the amended article? Move the question, okay. Those in favor of ending discussion and voting on this, please say aye.
Aye.
And the a negative. Okay, we'll move on. So, Article 7, as amended, is, will the voters adopt the proposed 2018, '19 fiscal year arts, park, and recreation department budget in the amount of 250,195 dollars, a portion thereof in the amount of 171,645 dollars to be raised by taxes. The tax rate of 2018 grand is to the town, sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. So, all those in favor-
Where the board?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Modern? Are we actually recording on an amendment to the amendment?
Well, we are, but the amendment changes those numbers, so I read the article.
I'm not saying, well, put it in the amendment, it's recorded down, then we go back to the original?
Correct. That's correct. So, all those in favor of those new numbers in Article 7, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I'm gonna have a division in the House. All those in favor of Article 7, please stand, as amended, please stand.
It's amended to the amendment.
Yes, amended to the amendment with the new dollar bills. Those, those opposed, please stand. Okay, the ayes have it. So now we're gonna go back to Article 7, basically which is almost what I've read. And with your permission, I won't read it again, I'll just say that we're going to be voting for 250,195 dollars for the amount of the budget and 171,645 to be raised in taxes. So this is back to the original amendments.
Aren't we going to vote?
Yeah, we voted on the amendment, now we go back to the original.
Aren't we voting on the amendment to the amendment? And now we have to vote on the amendment?
Yep, as amended.
And then we can vote on the article as amended.
Even though it's the same three times in a row.
Even though it's the same three times in a row? Okay. All those in favor of the new.
I think you have hands for discussion.
Yeah, anyone want to discuss this? Seeing no hands. So, will the voters adopt the proposed 18-19 fiscal year arts and park recreation department budget in the amount of 250,195 dollars and a portion in the amount of 171,645 to be raised by taxes? The tax rate on the 2018 grant list of the town sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, and it appeared to have it, and you've passed the amendment. Now we'll go to the article as amended, which is what I've read. Will the voters adopt the proposed new year fiscal budget for the arts, park, and recreation department in the amount of 250,195,000, a portion thereof in the amount of 171,645 to be raised by taxes? The tax rate on the 2018 grant list of the town sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You've approved and amended Article 7. Now, with your permission, we will take a recess and we will have our school board, our school, Bristol Town School meeting. And those school board members can come on up, you guys can get refreshments, we'll just take a five-minute break while we get organized.